All right, we are recording, so I will call this meeting of the municipality bank ridge board of ethics to order. Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
I understand that members Goodstein and Wilson are both excused.
I did have one question about that, Madam Clerk, which is I had thought we'd received a follow-up message from Ms. Wilson stating that she would potentially be present to the beginning of the meetings that we could raise the, we could discuss the question of her continued participation as a member of the board in light of a potential conflict that has arisen regarding her employment. And that we would add that to the agenda. Did I misunderstand that set of emails?
No, Madam Chair, I don't think you misunderstood, but I do think it was a little unclear whether Ms. Wilson was going to attend or not.
Yeah, she said, "I'm happy to join you at the start of the meeting." Does she have the meeting invitation?
She does. Would you like me to send her an email while the board gets started?
That would be perfect, thank you. Um, and to that, was it the will of the board? So for framework, I mean, the board did receive the same email from Ms. Wilson that I believe I received, which was with respect to the fact that she is concerned that her role as an appointed director of the alcohol and marijuana control office precludes her from service on the Board of Ethics because of the requirements of AMC 115140B1 that provides that board members may not hold elected or other appointed office with any municipal, state, or federal government. Um, and I had wanted the board to consider the issue because I do see some vagueness in the code with respect to how it defines the positions that are prohibited and that it prohibits the holding of appointed public office. Um, and so I'd asked Ms. Wilson for more information about how her position is filled and thought we, as the board, could consider whether we think the, um, whether this in fact constitutes the conflict of the, under the, under the code that precludes Ms. Wilson's continued participation or not. Um, procedurally, Madam Clerk, I realize we don't actually have this on the agenda. Maybe here under approval of the agenda, item three, if the board is immutable, I would propose adding this to the beginning of the agenda and discussing it as a board and then proceeding to our regularly scheduled agenda. Do I have discussion, a motion to do that?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I would approve that as well. So, um, as amended, do I have a motion to approve the, um, the agenda?
So move.
Oh. The thing, I can't remember if there is one of the matters that perhaps we're not going to be able to take up without Abram.
Oh, that, that's a good question. Um, the 2022-2 quorum was, I believe, the three of us, right? Was that?
I'm sorry, I'm.
I believe that's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we can take that up, although I have not finished my draft. So that one, we, I think the answer there is that that one will need to be tabled until a future month. 2021-12, what was the quorum? I thought that was all of us, but I could be wrong.
You're correct on that one as well, Madam Chair.
So there we do have quorum to consider, to consider that item. And 2022-1, I thought that was all of us too.
That Abram wrote part of, so do we need him to be here necessarily or not for us to review it and approve it on 2021-12? I'm sorry for my cough.
Oh, no problem. I would assume that provided we didn't need, because we did consider part of that, your part of that when you had been, you had been needed to leave the meeting. So I believe we can continue to deliberate on it in his absence.
Okay. Great.
That's a good question, though. All right. So as amended, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
I approve that as well. So I think the agenda is approved. Hi, Joan.
Hello.
So then I think as amended, our agenda has us moving to the discussion of Ms. Wilson's continued service on, on the board. And thank you, Joan, for joining us, as we wanted to take up as an initial matter, the discussion of this potential conflict with your current services, the AMCO Director and potential, and continued service on the Board of Ethics. Um, so do you want to provide any additional details or color to us and then we can talk about the code?
Well, first, let's start with Board of Ethics membership and I know it says it 150, let me give me a second, a second to look at that. Page 16, 140.
Mm-hmm.
Which states under additional qualifications, under B, "In addition to the qualifications set forth in section 405035, board members may not, one, hold elected or other appointed public office with any municipal, state, or federal government unit." Um, I forwarded, I think I, the statutes governing my appointment as AMCO Director, and I'm pulling up that email, if you just give me a moment. Which talks about the appointment of this person, me, currently.
Oh. Fraud. Oh, sorry, maybe you go on, but I have, I had a question.
I'm sorry, I was just looking for the statutes, and I know I sent them to you, but where are my sent emails?
You sent us AS 0406070.
Yeah. AS 0406070A says, "The governor shall appoint a director to serve as the executive officer of the Board and the Marijuana Control Board created under AS 1738080." And basically, AS 1738 says, "Who's ever appointed to the AMCO, to the alcohol position serves the Marijuana Control Board." So I, I can't tell you, I was appointed by the governor. I do believe in the past other employees have been, other AMCO Directors have been hired by Department of Commerce and just then approved by the governor. But mine seemed to be, uh, I didn't sit for interviews. I was pretty much appointed to it. And I, is it a public office, might be a question.
That to me is the question, is what do we define public office as? Because, so I think about, because technically, and this was going to be a question of who technically, what's the universe of people who are technically appointed by the governor, right? Because like at the municipal level, anyone who holds the title of director is technically appointed by the mayor. Actually, anyone who falls right into the executive employee category, which includes people even below the director level, are technically appointed by the mayor, even though
Right.
I, that's a, it's, it does, like in most instances, they are hired by a department and it's, there's sort of a formality process. And so I was just thinking about like, is what the code really is saying? And I don't think we have a good neutral source for what is and is not public office, because we don't have it defined within our portion of Title I. I was just looking in the code.
And let me say, I'm more than willing to continue to serve. I joined because I have a great interest in this. And as I think I mentioned in my email, attorneys general are appointed as well, you know?
And so are like every member of every government, every state board or commission and like the heads of the munis, you know, whatever, the mental health trust and every department. Like, so that was kind of my question is, what's the scope of, of appointments? Do you know, like, what is the whole universe of things, of people at the state level who are technically appointed by the governor?
Um, I'm speaking anecdotally. So in general, your commissioners are appointed, judges are appointed. AMCO Director is a little bit different, that, that there is an actual, you know, statute that says the governor appoints. And it's interesting, because the governor appoints me, but I can only be removed for cause, I mean, without cause, if both boards agree to dismiss me. So it's kind of the governor's one chance to get it right, although he can replace board members. And by he, I just mean anyone in that position, but, but it has to do with the nature of trying to keep alcohol and marijuana, primarily alcohol, out of kind of a political patronage sort of thing. So I don't know, does the municipality, I haven't had a follow-up conversation with the mayor's office, other than the brief email I sent to them. But I don't know if the attorneys for online have had any past precedent with it. I just don't want to violate the ethics, you know?
No, definitely. And to me, it's like, it totally verges on whether do we consider appointed public office to actually be any employee whose employment with the state is subject to a, like a, an appoint, gubernatorial, like approval appointment process? Or do we interpret those languages, that language, appointed public office to be like, if you fill a position that would normally be an elected role, but you have to be, you happen to be appointed because we, there's a vacancy and you are then appointed, et cetera, like Austin became the mayor? Like, what do we actually mean by appointed public office? And I don't have a ton of external contextual clues, because we don't, we use the word public office six times in the municipal code as a whole.
And the definitions.
One of them actually references, like, an office, like, it's actually an office, like, not a position held, but a physical office. Um, one seems to imply gifts, 115050, we use elected public office, which is time spent campaigning or fundraising, but there we use the modifier elected. We use public office commission as a reference to APOC. There's the reference that we're talking about. And then literally, the only other thing is, in 115020, we, we distinguish between holding public office or employment in the general statement of purpose. For the ethics code, we say, "Holding public office or employment is a public trust." And to me, that sort of function, that sort of divides between elected public office versus employee. But it's challenging, because this, the, the role you sit in sort of is, is, is a unique subcategory that I don't, and I don't know if, and the problem is, we've lost a lot of institutional history. I don't know, Terry, you probably are our longest serving member. Do you, do you, any recollection of, what is your thought and what was intended here and whether it applies to Joan's situation?
Yeah, you know, it's a good, it's a good question. It's an, it's an, it goes back to the, the, the prev, you know, the original code. So I don't know, we certainly have never had a case where it came up before. We've had, of course, a million, not a million, but we've had numerous people who were in the Department of Law, right, serving and I think Yes, technically, right, they're appointed by the governor. I, there are, I think, isn't there a distinction between different kinds of appointees, right? I mean, I think some appointees are, are more pro forma and some are more political, right? Obviously, you know, the attorney general's really different, I think, from a prosecutor, right? And I'd be a little bit uncomfortable with the state attorney general being on the Board of Ethics, right? Even though it's not a political, it's a political position in some ways, right? I, so it would be up to us to sort of tease out why, right? I mean, like, so, you know, I would be concerned about, um, you know, conflicts of interest, right? You know, is, you know, is the board member beholden to another political player, right, you know, for their job? So the fact that you can't be removed for cause might be really important.
Without cause. I can't be removed without cause. I mean, I can be removed for cause, like, if I, you know.
Right, so it has to.
Absolutely awful, but I can't be removed without cause.
You don't serve totally the pleasure of the governor at this point.
Yeah, the statute says, "You may be re-removed for misconduct, misfeasance, or malfeasance." I didn't realize that misfeasance and malfeasance were different things, but be mindful.
Oh, my gosh.
And you have to be given a copy of the charges and afforded an opportunity to be publicly heard in person by counsel in defense against the charges upon at least 10 days notice. And you have, yeah, so it's pretty stringent about cause.
It's, yeah, I really am not politically beholden to anyone after appointment, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Not that it was your board, right? Your board can remove you at their pleasure.
The board can remove me, and yeah. And for any reason they want, if they didn't like the color of my hair tomorrow, it's like six people agreed.
Is there a set?
On each board.
Is there a set term? Is there a set term limit to your position?
Until they don't want, until I resign or someone asks me to leave, so.
Because at least Webster includes that, you know, you know, it includes like having a set term as part of the definition of public office. I'm trying to dig through Blacks Law Dictionary real quick to see.
This is one of the positions, like, often directors do need to resign at the, when governors change, but this is the one position that actually doesn't have, have to do that. I could offer my resignation, but the position, in order to stay out of political gamesmanship, doesn't require it. And it often surprises governors when they come on board, because it's not a position that people think about very much.
Yeah, I do worry about, I mean, like, just, just, just thinking out loud, and Joan, I think this was sort of your intuition too, right, is that I, I'm not worried so much, I'm not at all worried about you. I would love to keep you on the board. I'm just worried about sort of like the precedent and sort of like thinking through.
I feel like I need to know a little bit more, like, honestly, like, about what the universe is, because I, it, what, I don't know what the process is for the hiring of Assistant Attorneys General, like, because Jack was, wasn't he the chief deputy assistant or something? He was, he was something higher than a standard AG, right, when he served on the board?
He was the deputy director, right?
Yeah, of the criminal division.
Of the criminal division.
Which was 100% appointed by the governor.
Um, so the attorney general, I believe, appointed him. I think the attorney general, the governor appoints the attorney general, and generally, the attorney general appoints his senior management team, or her. But he also, he or she also appoints every single AG. You, you have to, in general, be interviewed by the attorney general to be hired there. So I have a certificate on my wall that I was appointed Assistant Attorney General by David Marquez.
I don't think I was officially appointed an AG, that concerns me. Apparently, I was illegally doing that for several, I was trying to remember. I don't think I, I don't think I ever interviewed with the AG.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, I know I did.
I don't think I did. That was, it would have been like 2010, 2011? I don't, I don't remember. I don't, I don't have a cool certificate, but.
I literally have it. This is to testify, Joan Ambleson has been appointed Assistant Attorney General.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's certainly the language of it. I don't, I don't remember it.
And then what about other scenarios where, like, I think about, like, so for instance, I have been toying with at some point, applying to be on the Governor's Council on intellectual and developmental disabilities. So I have a child with an intellectual developmental disability. And like, that's an appointed role. Like, does that mean I wouldn't be eligible for the Board of Ethics anymore?
You know, that, that, that sounds less like a public office than being director of an agency.
But why?
Man, it's a good, is the commission established by statute?
I think the commissions are all established by statute, and then they're, they could, like, they create a, or like, so for instance, something that I definitely know is created by statute, new statute this year, came through the legislature creation of the State of Alaska Broadband Advisory Board. They're going to advise the broadband deployment office. People who serve on that are then precluded from service on the Board of Ethics?
I would think advisory boards wouldn't, because they don't, they lack discretionary authority, don't they?
They get treated different than, at least under the Open Meetings Act, than boards who can take official action.
But is that the definition of public office? Whether you can take, because I do think they have a role in selecting recipients of the $1.5 billion in broadband equity access and deployment funding that's coming through the state. But maybe that's not official action, it's really federal money? Like, I don't know, we're kind of creating a bunch of, like, what is the trigger? Is the trigger who appoints you? Or is the trigger whether you have a term? Or is the trigger whether you can be removed without cause? Is the trigger whether you can spend public funds?
Okay, Paul, and I, I know you're new there, or Megan?
Well, um, yeah, I was thinking, would the analysis be different in anyone's mind if this was an elected position? You know, because under the, the ethics code 115140B, it says, "Hold elected or other appointed public office." That's, that's one thought. And then I'm also looking at the definitions under the ethics code under 115180B Bravo for appointed public body. And it's the appointed public body of the municipality. But I'm thinking, maybe we could use that definition as sort of an analogy to appointed public office. You know, is a appointed public body the same thing as a public office? Because the code does have, the current ethics code has a, has a definition for appointed public body of the municipality means any municipal commission, board, committee, authority, or public corporation created by ordinance with members of the public appointed, subject to confirmation by the assembly or the school board, whether sitting in public session or executive session, including advisory, appellate, management, quasi-judicial, and regulatory municipal entities. So, I mean, I'm thinking maybe the term appointed public body, you know, could be used as an analogy to the term appointed public office.
Well, and Terry, is that your definition from, where's that from?
That's Webster's, at any rate. I couldn't find anything.
Dovetails with what Megan's reading, right? I mean, this is.
I'm sorry, it's in 115180B.
Yeah, but 115180B, that describes, like, that description essentially says the same things that Terry is saying, right? Because all of these municipal commissions, boards, committees, authorities, or public corporations are created by ordinance, so constitution or legislative act. And all of those appointments have a definite tenure. You're never indefinitely appointed to any public body. And they involve the power to carry out some governmental function. So to a certain degree, we are relying on the same three criteria for appointed public body as we are for, as Webster's is for appointed public office. So their definition of public office in.
Confirmed by the legislature. So the conditions are, the director is not, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Becky.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask if Roberts Rules of Order, because there are provisions of the municipal code, right, that say, like, where things are ambiguous, like, we incorporate all of Roberts rules. Do we incorporate any sort of dictionary definitions? Just looking generally at the code. Roberts Tools of Order. Does that have a public office definition?
Is this really the first time the questions come up?
In my recollection. I don't know, Terry, if it's come up another.
No.
It may have been the first time, the first person that noticed it, June.
Oh, okay.
You know, people like, you know, like, you know, David Nesbit, right, he got appointed as a judge at one point, and he stepped down from the board. But I don't know if he did it because of that part of the code, or I mean, there'd be other reasons why you wouldn't.
I assume that the judicial code of conduct, like, probably, I mean, I don't know enough time ahead, but I assume that most of our over, over, our overlap with the judiciary is precluded by the judicial code of conduct.
I think that's right, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's, and even if it didn't, the appearance is probably not the best, right? And so, but really, that's about it. I mean, like, you know, we had, you know, well, I guess you and Bill, right, at various times, took positions in the municipality, but the, you know, the, the code has very specific things about municipality, even being an employee.
You can't be a municipal employee and be on any board, right? So.
Right. So we really, no, so in that sense, we really don't have any, at least it's never come up before. I mean, like, it is an interesting question about whether these various, you know, Assistant Attorney Generals that we've had over the years count as a public office or not. But we've certainly, I think Joan's the first person we've really had who had even this kind of level of position in, you know, in the state administration.
Who, do you have to file with APOC, Joan?
I do. But so does a lot of people, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do file it with APOC. I'm, I'm trying to, um, you know, think in general, if anything about, this doesn't apply to that, but anything about me having authority over alcohol and marijuana licenses creates some kind of impediment that would influence my opinion on ethics issues.
That seems like it would be matter-specific.
I have a dispositive code reference.
What?
Oh, no, wait, no, never mind. It's only in Title 23. Because in Title 23, in two different instances, we say, "Term shall have the ordinary accepted meanings within the context with which they are used. Webster's Dictionary shall be construed as providing ordinary accepted meanings." Granted, we only cite that in Title 23, which is the building code, and not Title I. So maybe my enthusiasm was premature. But I do think referencing Webster's in the absence of a definition within the municipal code is not out of alignment with how we have interpreted code provisions in the past.
And so the other thing I wonder, is it ours to decide, or is it the mayor and the assemblies to decide?
Right.
Since he appoints and they confirm, correct?
Yeah, I mean,
And I did not.
It's a good question, right? Because they, if, if, say it was a flagrant violation, right? Like, say it was like, you were the governor, and the mayor was like, "I know, my governor friend, he's my buddy, we're going to get him on the Board of Ethics." And the governor was like, "I'm not, nothing else going on, I'm going." And the assembly said, "Sure, sounds good," right? Like, like, you'd hope that they would get advice from their, I think we'd still have the authority to review the applicability of Title I and make a recommendation. I don't know that we can, so even, so say, assuming that, and assuming you were the governor, and you were like, "No, no, I'm fine here. The assembly and the mayor have told me I'm fine here." I think we would have the authority to consider the applicability of Title I to your position and to make a recommendation. We couldn't compel you to resign, because I think that is a, probably a mayoral and assembly, because there's a whole process for removal of a public servant, who, which I think is an ethics board recommendation, followed by review by the assembly, plus the mayor, if I'm remembering the ordinance properly, it was adopted a couple of years ago. So I don't think we have the authority to definitively direct you to resign. But I think we do have the authority to review Title I and make a recommendation.
And you've mentioned something. So when I was confirmed to this position, I was still an attorney general. So the, the assembly had no idea I was going to become AMCO Director, nor did I. I mean, that was, it came up very, very quickly.
True, I guess that's fair. So they wouldn't have reviewed it then. But then again, assuming you became governor, so my, my analogy, you've suddenly elected governor, and you're like, "No, I'm going to stay."
I'll stay, yeah.
Yeah, then I think we would have the, we would then look to the, if you were not yourself offering to, like, saying this is a potential violation, I might, I would recuse myself if I, if I, or to step down, if it is a violation, we would go through the process of, like, making a recommendation and referring it to the mayor and the assembly per the ordinance. But I think it's appropriate for us to consider the interpretation of Title I and make a recommendation.
Do you want to do that without me? I mean, since it's about me, so.
That's a good question, procedurally, because effectively, I feel like you're asking for
I'm asking for advice, yeah.
An advisory opinion.
Yeah.
Um, which are non, let me look at the process under whether or not we.
Well, am I? I mean, I, what I want to do is not create an ethical issue for anyone, including any of the decisions we render. Let's say it ever was a close vote, right? And someone would say, "Oh, you let this appointed person decide my fate." That's the worst-case scenario of it.
Yeah. And I realize I've kind of circumvented a process. I'm looking at 115150. I guess if you are characterizing this as an advisory opinion, a request for advisory opinion, then you do have the right to have this be confidential. And I, I realize I should have caught that. We are now in open session, we're not in closed.
I'd rather the public know. I, I would rather it to be an open conversation for them, so.
So I hear you then waving, waving, waving the confidentiality notification. Okay. And then I think.
And also help other people similarly situated. So go ahead.
Yeah, and then I think that we can issue an advisory opinion. Um, and to, and I think we should in this instance, because to me, I'm sort of shocked this hasn't come up in the past, and I imagine it's because people in analogous positions haven't even thought of it, like.
The, I don't know if this is helpful or not, or if we want to follow it. There is a definition of public official in the APOC code. I don't know if this is helpful or not, or if we want to follow it. There is a definition of public official in the APOC code.
What does it say?
It's 395200 definitions. Public official means, there's a whole list, but a judicial officer, the governor or the lieutenant governor, a person hired or appointed in a department in the executive branch as the head or deputy head of the department, the director or deputy director of a division, a special assistant to the head of the department, or a person serving as the legislative liaison for the department, an assistant to the governor or the lieutenant governor, the chair or a member of a state commissioner board, which, which I assume Joan is why you have to file with APOC, state investment officers, and the state comptroller, the chief procurement officer, the executive director of Alaska Workforce Investment Board, each appointed or elected municipal officer, and the members of the Board of Proceeds, executive director, and investment officers for the. So that's a long list, but that's just public official. So then for our purposes, it would have to be an appointed public official. You'd have to add that to that definition. So it gets a little bit circular, but that makes me sorry, more convinced that maybe, maybe you are in fact an appointed public official. If you're a person appointed to a state commissioner board.
I am not appointed to a state commissioner board.
That's right, that's right.
I'm appointed as a director.
As a director.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and you, Asia, oh, sorry. Isn't the term director specifically mentioned in the statute that you just read, Asia?
The director or deputy director of a division.
Division, yeah.
Are you a division, Joan?
Yes, we are, AMCO's division.
Oh, okay.
Division of the Department of Commerce.
So wasn't Jack an appointed director of a division, then?
Yes.
Probably was, yeah.
Criminal division of the department alone, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm worried, I'm worried about, worried about a lot of things, you guys. Just about the effect of, you know, prior decisions and other people who, you know, maybe were, would have been disqualified by current code language, you know, from serving on the Ethics Board. And I think, you know, Joan might be the first person who's brought this issue up, since I might limit in short time on the board, but.
That said, I mean, I, I mean, we were, I was there, it was Terry, when we drafted this language, and I don't believe our legislative intent was to preclude like division directors and assistant directors. And perhaps it was our ignorance of the appointment process at the state level, or my ignorance, I can't speak for Terry's assessment of the situation. I think probably it was my ignorance of the extent to which something would be considered appointed public office that led to the adoption of this language. And that's, and so.
Well, sure, the definition of public official under the APOC statute is for a different purpose than the definition of who may properly serve on the municipal Board of Ethics. So we could say it's not an appropriate definition to look to.
And I would think the point of the Board of Ethics is, you don't want a partisan person on it, right? Isn't that kind of the point? Maybe I'm missing it, but.
I think it's, you don't want a partisan person, and, you know, you kind of want to avoid the appearance of partisanship, if you can. So you sort of don't want political agents, people perceived as political agents on the board. And so that's sort of what, I kind of like the APOC definition, because it gets, what I was trying to get at, that it seems like there's a difference between an Assistant Attorney General who goes through an interview process and gets hired, and is basically an employee. And then someone who's occupying more of these discretionary, often political appointments from, say, the governor, him or herself, right? And it seems like that's what the APOC distinction is also trying to get at, that there is a range of people, again, the Attorney General, right, you know, that that seems like in a political appointment in the way that a prosecutor in Anchorage really isn't. You might remember it was in the news a few years ago, right, when I think, when the governor took over, like, they kind of like, you know, how far down do we go and ask people to reapply and stuff like that? And there was some pushback, like, whoa, you're, you're missing this fundamental distinction. And now maybe this is where it was coming from, the APOC definitions. But I remember people pushing back, saying, there's a fundamental distinction between a couple of different layers of a.
Well, it's the same thing that happens at the muni, right? Because at the muni, all, actually, all of the attorneys are execs who serve at the pleasure of the mayor, entirely, like, every attorney at the muni could be dismissed for no reason by the mayor for like, any reason or no reason, right? And so it's always an interesting question. When that happened at the state level, you know, the same question comes up at the municipal level, and I think it was, it happened one time in the history of the municipal Department of Law that a mayor asked for the resignation and reaplication of all the municipal attorneys too. But it is technically, like, the executive, in the municipal code, there's multiple classifications of employees, and the top one is executives. And again, that includes every attorney, every prosecutor, every civil attorney.
Is that, isn't, is that, I should know this, is that true at the state level? Aren't all AAGs serving at the?
Yeah, they're arguably exempt, and I'm partially exempt in this position as well.
Yeah.
That said, I did not file an APOC report when I was an AG or a prosecutor.
Right.
Well, and the APOC requirements at the muni are really weird, because it says, like, you know, Terry read that definition, or Asia read the definition, the municipal manager has to file with APOC, but other members of the senior executive team at the muni do not. And it's, I was never clear to me entirely why, but I know, like, Falsy had to had to file, and I did not when I was municipal attorney.
Yeah.
So I like, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, I like the idea of requesting a, an advisory opinion. That's kind of interesting, an interesting idea for a board member, you know, a board of ethics member to request an advisory opinion. That's a little different, but I mean, I like the idea of, you know, putting some time and thought and research into this issue.
You know, and one other thing, Dee used to file advisor, requests for advisory opinions a lot on behalf of others, so.
Oh, that's true.
So you could file it as well.
Yep, yep, and I think the code specifically says that.
I think that would be a good idea. I mean, my personal preference would be that Megan, you file that application, right, and we can take this under advisement and can, and, and aim to potentially deliver it with more information and, and.
Well, I guess, yeah, sorry, sorry to cut you off. The code does say, "The municipal attorney." So I guess.
Well, yeah, true, so it would have to be.
Yeah.
Do you have an appointed municipal attorney at this point? Has he been?
Uh, that's, that's another good point. Not yet, he's still acting. But anyway.
Well, in the acting world, he can, he has the power to file, so it would be requesting that he file it. Or that he asks to have his, whoever, you know, Dee was not the municipal attorney when she did it, she did it in her, oh, she did it in her role, right, as ethics officer or something, right? Like.
Yeah. I'm embarrassed, I don't recall the acting's name. I know I've heard it once before, but.
Mario.
Mario Bird.
Okay.
But no, I think, yes, I mean, I think, I think that would be proper, you know, for essentially our office, you know, to request an advisory opinion on that issue.
And then we could recuse you, Joan, from consideration of other matters until we resolve or issue decision, or no?
It depends on how long that is, because then I think that's unfair to the mayor, because he's sitting with an open appointment for how long an advisory opinion might take. And I haven't talked to them. I hate to, I hate to complicate everybody's lives. I know we had things, you had things, at least.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm sort of pondering whether we, what happens if we keep you?
Like, could I form quorum? You know, that would be even a basic question for you, yeah.
Well, it's sort of a game and all the way out, right? The one scenario is you continue to participate in all matters that, as, as normal, while we had, while you've submitted a request for an advisory opinion, it's not clear whether or not you, I don't think the code is clear on whether or not you should be, you know, should resign or not. And so while it's pending, you continue to participate. And then we issue a decision and say the decision says we, we find this to be a conflict of interest under the code. And then either, and then either you step down, or you say, no, I'm digging in. And then we go through the, like, we submit our recommendation onto the Assembly, or whatever we're supposed to do in the instance that we find a conflict. Does that then render in any way, to me, I don't think that actually renders questionable any decision in which you participated, unless we identify an individual conflict of interest, because you have notified the Board of the potential conflict. The code is not clear on whether or not you are, so I think it would be as of the date of the advisory opinion that you would need to take action to be recused from matters. It's my initial thinking. I don't know. Terry, Asia, what do you think?
Yeah, I think especially if the advisory opinion were to say, and I would recommend it saying, something like, you know, the code was unreasonably, was, was, you know, was, was not, you know, clear. And so in that lack of clarity, that, you know, our advice was that you could continue to participate. The Board has something of a privileged position in terms of interpreting the code, at least as far as municipal matters go. So I think if we were to say, certainly orally, I think that's the advice we're giving Joan right now. Or we could be giving her right now, saying like, hey, it's not clear, it's just not super clear, so while we sort it all out, yeah, why don't you continue to participate? So that's the advice we're giving right now. And then when we write something up, maybe we include something like, hey, we told you at the time, keep plowing along, because the code wasn't pretty clear, but now that we've dug into it, let's.
So we better understand the appointment process and the history and the legislative history and et cetera, then we potentially, I think that's, I tend to, Asia, what do you think?
I don't have a strong opinion either way.
The other opinion, I, I think like a fix you could put in is, because I'm happy to be here. If for some reason a decision was three to two, like, that decision would get tabled. And I was on the free side, I guess in that case, until that advisory opinion could be decided, unless that would cause just too long of a delay. And now I'm thinking of the person who deserves.
Yeah, and to me, I think that's dangerous, because I don't want to imply that in any way the decisions that you participated in thus far are invalid, because I don't think they are. I think you've pointed out a, a vague area, or in, like, an unclear area of the code that may or may not apply to your position, which I think is very wisely pointed out. I would, I would hate for us to create a situation where, I don't think we're, I don't think we, we are creating, and we would get to a situation here where we think somehow retroactively, now all the decisions in which you participated should be invalidated or reheard. I think, again, this is a timely, timely raised, a, a, a lack of clarity in the code that we need to consider. And then if, once we've made a recommendation, then I think then we would maybe get into this realm of, like, if we made a recommendation and you were like, no, I refuse to leave, and then continued to vote, and then we would maybe be in this situation, I don't know, that, yes, which does not appear to be your posture on this position.
Since we don't issue, like.
Drama free, I'm drama free, I don't want to, there is other qualified people that can sit in this chair, so, but go ahead, Asia.
I was just gonna say, we also don't, like, we don't issue decisions like four to one or three to two. I mean, we don't, we don't. So I don't think, yeah, I think it's fine. I agree, I don't think we want to call our decisions into question. And you know, that's actually, that's along the lines of what we've discussed before about if other, if other people sort of inadvertently violate the municipal code of ethics, we've toyed with the idea that their votes don't necessarily have to be redone, or like, it doesn't necessarily invalidate, you know, a board action on something. I think we, I think we kind of haven't explicitly said, but are leaning towards thinking that inadvertent and minor and sort of unclear violations of the code don't invalidate the action that was subsequently taken, or at least we can't say that, that, that that's true. So I think that's just the line.
I'm sorry, sorry.
But.
I was just gonna say, just my one caveat to that is, you know, this is, we're talking about the, the section of the code about qualifications for members on the board, you know? It says, "Board members may not," you know, so I think we're talking, like, and it would just be for a time certain, right? From the time that Joan was actually appointed the director, which was, did you say May? Is that correct, Joan?
Yeah, I think May 8th or 12th, something like that, yeah.
So to me, this, I don't know, I just, I don't think it's necessarily just like a conflict of interest type of issue. You know, I think it's more of like, is this person even like qualified to sit on the board? And in that case, you know, if the board said that, no, you actually are not qualified to sit on the board, I think that might have some more severe ramifications for any decisions that, you know, she would have been involved with, I suppose. That's just kind of my take on it at this point, but I like the idea of doing, you know, further robust research into it. I'm just not, I'm just not sure about what to do, you know, with Joan's position in the meantime, I guess, you know, if her qualification, excuse me, is in question, as opposed to just like a conflict of interest. I don't know, Paul, do you have any thoughts on any of this?
No, I was just gonna say, I agree with, with what you said earlier about, and again, I don't think it would be necessarily causing the issues, unless there was some opinion that was related to that appointment where it could create a potential conflict. But I don't see that. But I, I think what my read of that whole provision, though, is it was talking about elected or otherwise appointed position, and I think that those words, or other appointed, is kind of modifying the word elected. So it's kind of getting at a particular type of position, public office, that's not necessarily included in those other types. So, but I do like the idea of doing more research on this, getting an opinion, and then, you know, presenting it to people who either the mayor or the Assembly, who can then make that determination. If we say, this issue has come up, we've done further research on it, and we don't think that it necessarily disqualifies this person, but, you know, ultimately, it's your decision, I guess.
Yeah, I would disagree with the jurisdiction decision. Like, I think that, like, the mayor and the Assembly have jurisdiction over of our appointments, which has already happened, like, that has already happened. We have jurisdiction over the interpretation of Title 21, a Title 1 under the, under the 115150 in terms of advisory opinions. In terms of, like, if there's, so we have the, so I think we have the authority and the jurisdiction to issue an advisory opinion, that there is a separate provision of municipal code that has to do with what happens if somebody is like, where the Assembly and the mayor do have some jurisdiction. Actually, I was looking for, I don't know if one of you, Megan, you know it off the top of my head, of your head, where in the code the new provisions are, not about the removal of the mayor, but there's a separate provision about removal of people from a board or a commission. I can't remember.
Talks about removal of the Board of Ethics. Is that, it's under 115140 Delta D, a removal of the board, a member of the Board of Ethics.
Ah, there we go, yeah, definitely remove for a good cause. So, to me, that's where, like, if we were, if we made a recommendation that this was not a conflict, I don't think there is any role for the Assembly or, because we are the body in charge with interpreting the code. If we made a decision that, if we made a recommendation that it was a conflict, then we go to either voluntary record resignation or removal under 115140D. I just want to be clear on process. I don't think there is any part of this in which we, the appropriate route is to go to a presentation to the Assembly and the mayor of our thoughts on the code. I don't think the code provides for that.
And I, I would agree with you, Becky, I would agree with that.
You know, what one possibility would be, just to like, to have it on the table, would be that what we decide, you know, we might decide ultimately to read the code kind of narrowly at this, at this time, but then go to the Assembly and say, if we thought that there should be a little bit broader exclusion of people who are not in sort of elected of political offices, public offices, but we wanted to say, hey, but maybe people like the Attorney General, right, people in these, you know, high echelon administrative, they probably shouldn't be on other. We could always go to the Assembly and say, let's clarify that language, where now we're gonna read it kind of now.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think we've done that before. We've said, like, we recommend that the Assembly make this decision, and we've made that, this recommendation through the Ethics and Elections Subcommittee of the Assembly. And then they've, like, we've offered, like, potential draft amendment language, and then somebody asked that, that Subcommittee is one of them, or the committee would be willing to sponsor changes. I think that's what we've done with some changes in the past.
Yeah, and I would feel better about that in terms of my concerns about the slippery slope, right? I mean, obviously, yeah, looking back in retrospect, yeah, we had Jack on, right? And I hadn't thought about it, but yeah, Jack was in a pretty high-level, politically appointed position. You know, Joan seems to be in, in one of those, like, director lab by the APOC standards, right?
Well, I see, like, you and Jack is very analogous. I mean, it's different in different agencies, but like, it's sort of an analogous where, like, neither of them triggers our, our gut instinct that it, it's a problem for you to be on the board, but both of you technically could fall in a bucket, you fall in the APOC bucket of public official, and could fall in a bucket of described by our language, depending on how we interpret it.
Yeah, because I take Paul's point to be a good point, right, that, you know, you know, that, that the language kind of looks like it's talking about elected public positions, and that you might be in such a position, because you were appointed, right? So, you know, but it's basically, it's really elected positions that we're talking about. You may have been appointed, so we want to cover that too. So I'm sympathetic with that. You may have been appointed, so we want to cover that too. So I'm sympathetic with that. I just don't want to wind up with a situation in which the attorney general of the state is eligible to serve on the municipal board of ethics.
Oh, totally. But then it's also like, what about like. You know, one of our more recent former municipal attorneys who now is an assistant US attorney who I is also an appointed position. Is she ineligible? Like, so I mean, the federal, we haven't even delved into the federal, like.
Yeah.
What if you're on, I have an employee who sits on the. Federal, the federal communications commissions, like subcommittee on diversity in telecommunications. Like, is she ineligible? Because it's a federal appointed office? Anyway, yeah, I think that, I mean, I think there's probably some role there for code amendment two. Okay. At risk of spending the whole meeting on this, it sounds like where we are landing is, um, we, Joan, we should continue to serve. We should direct the municipal or request that the municipal attorney's office file a request for an advisory opinion on this. And before our next meeting, I would say, let's not wait until next meeting for it to request that. If we could ask our attorney's support to. Do some additional investigation into how have we interpreted this in the past? What's the full scope maybe of employees that are appointed? What else? Are there other items that would be helpful to understand for the board as we consider? An advisory opinion on this? Well, I don't know what the old code says. I'd be interested in what the old code says.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say, Becky. I think looking at the old code would be helpful and I'm looking at the old code right now and it appears to use identical language, at least with the section that we've been talking about. It does say, uh, it says, members of the board shall not hold other, um. Hold other elected or appointed public office with any local, state or federal government unit. So I think, I think old code would be interesting to look at.
Interested in anecdotal D research too. I understand D is under contract with the assembly's office or the, the municipal clerk's office right now as a contract attorney. So. If we do have access to her institutional memory, I would also be interested in her thoughts.
Is, and is, is Julia still around? I mean, that's what we used to do like way back. Well, what did the framers intend? I don't know. Go talk to Julia. And they used to, she would sometimes walk down. She would walk downs. Oh gosh, you guys have got it all wrong. That's not what we meant. And so if she's around, I would love to hear.
Still like physically around. I feel like I saw her at the gym relatively recently, but maybe that was further along ago than I.
Julia.
Tucker.
Julia, I told you, Julia Tucker.
Yeah. She was assembly counsel for like. Four hundred years.
For a long time for the original versions of the, she was the, like, you know, and so she was always really good at saying. Oh no, we wrote this here. It was a particular controversy that led to this section of the original code and. It was often very clarifying. So Becky, the next time you see her at the gym, ask her what a public office is. Okay?
And then I will send a email to the mayor's office and say, this is the approach we're taking. And if there's some disagreement, I'll certainly let you know. But it sounds like a kind of a nice middle route that preserves. Doesn't put him in the position of rushing a member and, uh. Also though, gives credence to this ordinance and the importance of lack of political influence.
And allows the board to continue to function. Like I feel like there are a number of provisions of the code that emphasize that we live in a small community where there are necessarily conflicts and that the goal should be also. Functioning municipal government. So I worry if we were to be like, you sit out for six months. We would frequently lack quorum and also be unable to proceed with the consideration of pressing ethics matters.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing. There's a small pool of, you know, talented professionals who are willing to do this type of, of work. So it'd be a shame to, you know, lose Joan. And I think, yeah, further, uh, further research is warranted and I'm happy to. To take that on and, and run that up the, my chain of command and all that good stuff.
I feel like we should make a motion. Could someone like to make a motion? That we request an advisory opinion and that we request the filing of an advisory opinion and. Research and response to that request from the municipal attorney's office prior to our next meeting.
Can I so move? That work?
And then we, I guess we should probably add that we also direct or request that Joan continue to serve, uh, in, until we have reached a conclusion on this. Unclear provision of the code. Can I amend your motion? Do you accept my amendment?
Motion amended. So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
I am supportive of that as well. I feel like Joan should be recused from this vote.
I was going to ask if I could abstain. Yeah. Yeah. All right.
All right. With that, we can move on to the rest of our regularly scheduled agenda. Um, I would ask that we table, um, item four A until next meeting. It's my apologies. I'm halfway through my. My opinion on that and intended to finish it today, but had a number of meetings run long. So I don't think there's any interuse in going into executive session to talk about that one, since it's, I don't have a draft. Have a motion.
Um, I move that we, uh, move that item to the next meeting.
Second.
I support that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll move that to our next meeting. So then, uh, the motion to go into. Uh, executive, actually, we would go into deliberative session, correct, to consider. Um, and I would have us go once to consider both the draft opinion for ethics complaint for potential violation 2021 dash 12. And the draft opinion for ethics complaint for potential violation 2022 dash. One and return to open session only to discuss what we'd like to do with four D. Do I have, hear a motion on that respect?
I move that we move into, it would be deliberate deliberative session, right?
Correct.
I think for, uh, 2021 dash 12 and 2022 dash one.
Perfect. Um, so I believe at this point we jump into our other invite and we'll leave this invite open for any members of the public who. May elect to join.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Um, I believe Ms. Palason made the motion, but it was not seconded or approved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right. Now we have an actual approved motion. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And we're going to the other invite.
Other invite.
Clarify. Okay.
Right, okay.
See you there.
Bye.
Hey, we lost Asia somewhere in the transfer. Everyone else is here. Ah, there's Asia. All right, we're back. Um, I think I did a motion on the record to, um. Approve for the board to approve the final draft decisions. For ethics complaint with potential violation 2021 dash 12 and 2022 dash one as amended in deliberative. Session and. Do I need anything else further? I think that's all I need. So I have a motion to that respect.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right. Well, those. Uh, are complete and we will get those out as discussed in deliberative session. Excellent. And thank you. Special thanks to Asia and to Joan for their work on those opinions, which both were somewhat long and hefty endeavors. So appreciate that. And now in our last seven minutes, we have time to talk about our request for advisory opinion 2022 dash six. And I want to take a look at this and see if. The requester has requested confidential treatment or not.
Believe the requesters waived confidentiality.
Let me see, I don't seem to have it.
That is correct. Madam Chair, it, it is in your non-confidential packet.
Oh, got it. Okay. So it's not in the confidential packet. I thought maybe it was tagged at the end. All right, let me find it. Oh, here we go. I have it separately. There we go. Okay. And he has waived. Confidentiality. Just double checking. Oh yes, he's waived confidentiality. All right. So, uh, we have before us, um. Request for potential advisory opinion 2022 dash six. Have the board members been able to review this request? Or do we need a moment to review the written request?
Did we discuss this? We discussed this last meeting.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, we, we discussed this last meeting and Paul was nice enough. You all should have gotten an email with two previous board opinions regarding the nature of partisan activity. Cause that's what we just sort of decided was the key was what did this constitute partisan activity in the, in the, in the workplace? And so Paul sent us a couple where we've had, you know, previous decisions about that.
Did we, did you guys discuss whether, because my, my initial inclination was. It didn't seem. Partisan to me so much as it seemed professionally inappropriate, right? So even remove any of the political framework from it, right? And like. Say I was the director of HR and the fire chief was accused of. Sexually harassing numerous employees. And I attended a meeting as the chief of the human resources department with a shirt that said, I support chief on it. Um, while these, these investigations were pending. Like I would see that as professionally inappropriate because I am the arbiter eventually of whether or not. This is in fact a human resources issue. So I, did you guys discuss that last time? If that was just my initial gut and reading this?
I think we did. I think that was my concern too. And then there's been a subsequent action, correct? Since, since this request for advisory opinion. Of the person stepping down from.
It was in the news, yeah, during, during the week. Yeah. And that's always been the question is just sort of like, how far does the partisanship? Extend, um, you know, as you're supporting a cause or a person or an action. At what point are you using, you know, you know, in the workplace, are, are you engaging in partisan activity?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, Jerry. I just want to point out that last, um, meeting, the board did discuss this in deliberative session. I realize that is a, it is a non-confidential request, but you do have the ability to move into deliberative session if you choose.
Is there utility to moving into deliberative session if it's a non-confidential? Like, do we have the. Even the legal capacity to move into deliberative session to discuss a non-confidential matter?
I would, I would advise.
We're talking about, oh, go ahead, Megan.
I was just going to say, I would advise against that. Um, you know, in general, I think executive sessions are to be, you know, avoided unless they're truly necessary. Um. You know, and the, I guess the executive session portion would be, you know, if it's, uh, you know, detrimental to someone's character. So I guess there's that. But. I don't know. I mean, I would advise against sort of, um. Unnecessary, you know, deliberative sessions.
I mean, even without disclosing anything in public session, is the, is the issue here whether to accept this request? Is that what we're deciding on right now? To issue an advisory opinion?
Yeah, I think so. Cause I think in discussing it before we were unclear if it was even.
I don't think we accept or deny requests for advisory opinion in the same way that we would accept or deny requests, like complaints for potential violation. I think we nonetheless, we issue an opinion either way, but our opinion may be much like, as we discussed with the earlier matter regarding. You know, qualification issue we started out with, we still issue a decision, but we can issue an advisory opinion that says this isn't an ethical violation. Or an ethics code violation.
We do have discretion. We, we don't, if you look at the code, we can, we can exercise discretion whether we want to.
Oh yeah, we can, we can decline to, we can issue a concise written statement that declines to issue an advisory opinion. But here it seems like we are, the question is, is it a violation of the ethics code or not? So declining would almost be. Uh, saying it's not, uh. It's not an ethics code violation and it's potentially a violation of something else.
Decline for the same. We wouldn't say it's, well. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we can cite the same criteria that we can for our complaint, you know, that we can, you know, we could say we declined for any one of those reasons as well.
Well, really that we just don't.
Oh, there's no point in going into deliberative session now because we have one minute.
Yeah, we have one minute left. It seems like we need to adjourn and continue this to the next meeting. Um, and I did not realize the extent to which, I don't think I saw minutes from last month's meetings. I didn't realize this had been discussed and that there were. That those, those opinions that were circulated were applicable to this. Um, but, um. I think at this point, the appropriate thing is to continue this matter to next month and for us to come. Or to our next meeting, which is in three weeks and for us to come prepared, having read those opinions and considered further the, the scope of what type of opinion. We would like to issue on this.
Yeah, maybe give some thought. I mean, I think Becky, the reason why I think we, we kind of like held on to it. Was that this has always been an issue, like, you know, what exactly is the extent of partisan activity? And even if we decide this isn't a violation, at the end of the day, it might be worth, and maybe not because it's too much of a rat's nest, but it might be worth for this board to think a little bit about what are the criteria? For partisanship. What is exactly partisan activity?
Yeah. Cause a lot, it's not just this issue. It's continuously, I think that's been coming up, like. There have been several opinions that have. Kind of drawn upon this, or several requests recently, which kind of play to the same question. Is this partisan activity? Or is it just something you disagree with? Or is it inappropriate for some other reason? Like because it's not appropriate fulfillment of your duties under, you know. Charter, you know, whatever our, our human, our expectation from people under the human resources requirements. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, I would say, do we, I expect a motion to continue this item to next month or next meeting?
So.
And I can. Figured. Yeah, we're good. All right. I, I, all in favor of continuing it? Approved? Aye?
Aye.
All right. With that, I think we.
Can I mention one thing before we adjourn? Just very quickly, for, for forum purposes for next meeting, I will be in board meetings and fairbanks all of that week, so I won't be able to make it. So hopefully others can. So.
I'm traveling, but I'm going to try and organize my travel such that I am in Colorado Springs by the time that I need to dial into this meeting. So we'll see.
And now let's stop talking, Becky.
All right. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any, any opposed to adjournment? Hearing nothing. I say we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.